Yeah.
No.
No?
Okay.
You know what everything tonight?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
No, no, no. We'll get that, we'll get that neighbor.
Okay. The video's on.
They're working on it. They quite a crew respond pretty quick to that from CFP. They've won over box truck team and they did never come through. The store there.
You guys, we're waiting on Floyd, but are you guys ready to get started?
Yeah.
We're good? You ready to get started? Do you want me to kick off on third party, the third party requests, first thing on the agenda for tonight? And then we can keep going on this. So it's under the municipal tab. I was told that the library, right, Henry, is going to be a little bit late.
Yes, I got a message from Marge saying that Linda works until five, so she wouldn't be up until after that.
So we'll just come back to her, is that okay?
Mine and me. You the boss.
All right, so for third party requests, we have two that we received last year with Seniors Plus, Andersgård and Home Healthcare. Seniors Plus is asking for $2,000, that's a $500 increase. And then Andersgård and Home Healthcare is asking for $500, which is the same as last year. We also have a couple of new ones. Sexual Assault Prevention and Response Services for $1,000. TLEA for $2,500. Cancer Resource Center of Western Maine, $1,000. Tri-County Mental Health, $3,000. I don't know, is there anybody from any of those organizations here tonight?
Amy Skoggin.
All right, did you want to give us a quick rundown?
Well, just, sure. My name's Tom Fogarty, I'm the Community Engagement Officer, Amy Skoggin. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your support last year, and I just wanted to give you a quick update as to our organization. In 2022, you might have heard that we acquired Care and Comfort, which is a, was an organization that primarily concerned themselves with home care. This is a little different from home healthcare, in sort of, you know, aid to go into the home and help with daily routines and things. And then also a behavioral health line. In this acquisition, we did two things. One, we grew by about 300 people. And the second thing is that we now have a statewide footprint. We have offices from Questile all the way down to Bridgeton. And so I just wanted to give the board a just brief overview of that. And that we are the, now, the largest home healthcare and hospice organization in the state. And we, and tonight, I'm just respectfully asking for your support again. Couple of years that we were, we were a little bit off, off there, but now that relationship is continuing. And I'm just delighted to, for your support, and respectfully ask for it again. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Is there anybody here from Seniors Plus?
Hi there. My name is Dana Morale, and I'm the Community Services Supervisor at Seniors Plus. And we are the area agency on aging for Oxford, Andersgård, and Franklin Counties. We have a satellite office up the road in Norway on Marston Street. And we see a lot of folks from Oxford County. Oxford County, but Oxford as well. Here in Oxford specifically, we provided 4,470 meals on wheels to clients here. Meals on Wheels is one of our bigger programs, probably what Seniors Plus is known for. But we also do education and assistance. We have Medicare counselors that help older adults determine whether they're in the right Medicare program for them, whether they're getting the right insurance, right benefits, and that sort of thing. And we actually saved residents in Oxford $64,547 through our counseling by helping them to change to better programs. We had 350 requests for information through our community services department. So basically, folks call in looking for a resource, and we help them to find that resource. We do pet food as well as Meals on Wheels, so those older adults that have animals at home that can't afford to feed them, we help with that as well. And we have three residents currently receiving services through our dementia care programs. We help folks gain access to respite services, care services in the home for help. We utilize a lot of grants for that as well. But we help get people the help that they need at home. So we also have a money minders program, where people can use the services of a volunteer to help them manage a budget, get a budget, help them pay their bills, hopefully so that they can pay their taxes. And we have friendly caller programs for some of those older adults that are isolated and at home. Through COVID, of course, a lot of our older adults were in, you know, great need. So we developed the friendly caller program, and it continues to this day, where we just check in on those folks that are homebound and isolated, to make sure that they have what they need as well. So we are asking for your continued support. I'm very grateful for the honor to be here tonight, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
That's easy enough. Thank you. Do you have anybody from the Sexual Assault Prevention and Response Services here? How about from TLEA? And the Cancer Resource Center of Western Maine?
I don't know if I have enough packets, so if you guys want to share and play nice. But I'm the oncology social worker for the Cancer Resource Center of Western Maine. I'm also the oncology social worker at Stevens Memorial, but I'm here to represent the center. The center was started in 2014 by three cancer survivors who didn't feel like there was enough services in the area. It started as a drop-in service, just for people to get together and support each other. It's continued to grow over the last several years. I'd say significantly, even though our FTE equivalent is only 1.7 people. There's four of us, but we're all part-time. But our goal is to try to get funds to remove barriers for patients and get them in and get it right back out to patients. Like I said, it started as a drop-in center. And then the next program that was added was Live Well, which allows patients and one caregiver to get massage, reflexology, and rapey, because we want them to be taking care of themselves, the caregivers also, so they're not our next patient. And then we grew into doing online things when COVID hit, because we couldn't have our patients come in and exposed, be exposed to anything. So there's meditation, stress management, chair yoga, cooking, a lot of online stuff for people to do. Although, what I've found is our average age population is about 70, so online is not always the key for people, because technology is a huge barrier. And like you said, isolation was a huge barrier during COVID. So we had our volunteers calling our patients, checking on them to see how they were doing. We did a volunteer shopper program during COVID, where we had some volunteers who were willing to go grocery shopping for patients to keep them out of the stores. We wrote a grant to get COVID card, Hanaford cards, so that they could send somebody else to the grocery store for them. And we also made up COVID baskets, which were all the stuff people were scurrying to get, because we didn't want our patients going from store to store trying to get toilet paper. So we were able to work with a local business and make up baskets that had cleaning supplies and masks and toilet paper and paper towels and things a lot of people can't buy if they're on food stamps too, which is a challenge. About two or three years ago, they brought me on as a social worker, because surprisingly, there are a lot of patients who live in Oxford Hills, Oxford County, that aren't Stevens patients. They go to Boston, or Portland, or Central Maine, or Mumford, or Bridgeton. And they don't have access to an oncology social worker who knows the local resources. So what I do, and we now have a new person who's taken over some of my hours, because it got to be a bit much, is I meet with patients and I want to know what their barriers are. You know, when I had a patient call from the Bethel area and said, hey, I don't want to call you, Steph, I don't know what to do. I can either go to radiation, take up my medication, or eat this month, and I have to choose one of them, what should I do? And I don't want any patient to ever make a decision on treatment based on financial need. So we had emergency funds at that point, so we got her gas cards. I connected her to Med Access. We were able to get her prescriptions at a discount. And then we worked with some food banks to get her food, so she could do all three. But no patient should have to choose about their treatment based on the financial need. We help patients get insurance. We write grants for gas money, because if a patient suddenly has to go to radiation every day for five weeks, you know, 35, 25, 35 times, with our gas way it is, again, don't want that to be a barrier. So the Main Cancer Foundation, we've written grants and are able to give patients gas cards. We have a new navigator on who's a nurse. She's the one who's taken some of my hours, which is actually great, because she's a nurse, I'm a social worker. And so between the two of us, we found it's a pretty good combination. And she's doing more of the meeting patients, one-to-one at the office, and then she pulls in my brain when she needs it, because my brain's pretty limited these days. I'm trying to think what else we do. We have comfort items when patients get ports, so that the port doesn't rub on the seatbelt. We have chemo shirts that unzip, so that nurses can access the ports without having people having to put shirts down. Hats, quilts, wigs. Ensure has been a huge nemesis of mine. A lot of patients need it to maintain their weight, it's $25 a case. And when they're already on a fixed income, an extra $100 a month is not an option. So we've been able to team with the food bank that's at the hospital, that's run by Good Shepherd Hospital and Health of Oxford Hills. They're now stocking Ensure for me, for my patients. So we try to team and not reinvent the wheel ourselves, because we're not many of us. But anybody have any questions about the center? I know I talk fast. I'm kind of on a, my stress level's a little high these days.
Do you know how many Oxford residents are in your program?
I believe it's 22, I was trying to look it up. That's the number I had in my head that somebody told me. It's on that thing, but I actually think it's higher than that. It's on the 20, it's on one thing, and I think it may be more, but at least 22.
Anybody else have any questions?
My name is Stephanie. And my last name's LeBlond, L-E-B-L-O-N-D.
Thank you, Steph.
Thank you. And even though I'm an Oxford taxpayer, I still went to the line. I'm like, oh my God, you know they're not there anymore, now you're gonna be late!
Thank you. Is there anybody here from Tri-County Mental Health?
Timing. Your timing was perfect!
You're up. Sorry about that.
That was a good entrance right there.
I know. Not mine, I got into Austin.
Yes, that's right.
So is there a protocol?
No, if you could just introduce yourself, and who you are, and where you're from, and all that kind of, you know, what company you represent.
Sure, my name's Colin O'Neil. I'm the Chief Clinical Officer at Tri-County. So I just came over from next door, we have an office right next door, so.
We're saying your commute might have been rough over there, so. So yeah, if you can maybe give us a rundown of, you know, what you do for services, and what you're looking for, and that.
Sure. So just a quick overview to follow up the letter that we sent out. Tri-County's been around for over 70 years, and we've been serving the Tri-County area for that period of time. We are an old-fashioned community mental health center. And so we provide direct services to over 1,000 mayors a year. We provide counseling, medication management, case management. We have three group homes. We provide case management to folks who present with major mental illness, substance use disorders, and intellectual and developmental disabilities. And so, like I said before, we have served over 1,000 mayors. Looked up this area in Oxford specifically, last year we served 71 residents of your town and city. So we are primarily dependent on really two funding sources. One is third-party reimbursement, which is insurance. And the other is if someone is uninsured, we look for municipalities and United Way and other donors for that. And so in our letter, we were asking the city of Oxford for contribution of $3,000. That would go to serve our folks that are uninsured, and also to keep the operational office open next door. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at the top of that.
What's the tax status of your organization?
It's a nonprofit.
By the way.
Yes.
And what's the primary source of funding?
It's Medicaid. So that's our, and insurance.
Medicaid, insurance, and how much of your, you know, operating expenses is covered by those sources?
By those sources, over three-quarters.
And the remainder?
The remainder by grants, and by funders, municipalities, and United Way, and individual donors.
So proportion that's coming from municipalities currently?
I don't have that figure.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
All right, so that's it for the third-party requests. As far as the library, we're good, we'll come back to them when she's able to get here, I guess. So with that being said, are we okay to move on to the sewer? Zenya, you want to come join me up here, please?
I'm keeping this comprehensive service.
All right, so with the sewer, we'll start right at the top. So under regular payroll, you see an increase of the 99.90, bringing the salary line up to 123.811. The overtime does see an increase of $255, bringing it to 27.55. And as you can see, that there's not a lot of overtime at the sewer department, thankfully, but there needs to be some there for storm coverages, holidays, and if they get called in after hours. On-call is seeing an increase of, pretty good one of 69.36, bringing it to a total of 10,936. What this is, is for, between Zenya and his partner in crime down there, they split the on-call time. They're paid one hour per day to be available when they're off the clock, so that if there's an emergency at the plant, or something needs to be responded to, that whether it's him or Jeff, they have to respond. The reason this went up so much is that frankly, Zenya, when he's been on-call, he hasn't been compensated for it at all. He hasn't, you know, so we needed, that needed to be included, I felt, so. Social Security, Medicare, they are adjusted accordingly. As you can see, based on the payroll. Health insurance, there's two employees enrolled, that increased by 8.99. Retirement, again, that's based on two employees enrolled, sees a $2,010 increase based on payroll. Workers' compensation sees an increase of $215, bringing it to 47.03. Utilities, this is electricity, sees an increase of $4,000, bringing it to $54,000. That is for the wastewater treatment facility, three bridge crossings, and three pump stations. And we calculated that based on the current usages, as well as the current rates and what we're seeing. Just, that's an insane amount of money for electricity. Telephone sees an increase of $76, for a total of $24.28. Internet is $1.81 a month, which is, brings us to $21.72, which is a total increase of $3.24. Water stays the same, the current rate. We have propane heat, which is supplied by C and Brown for a pretty aggressive price of $1.16 per gallon. We use about 65.31 gallons a year, and that is a total of $75.75, which is a reduction of almost $3,000.
Excuse me, Adam?
Yeah?
On the propane, since it's coming up as a line item here in sewer, that's $1.16 a unit. What is the unit, is that a gallon?
Gallon.
Okay, so gallon. So apples and apples, you brought up last week, the town office is paying $2.10 per gallon for AmeriGas, because of the underground tanks, that's 81% higher than what the sewage plant is paying, and they're getting bulk. Just doing the math on the town office, if the town office were getting their propane, which we budgeted for this year, at the same price of $1.16 a gallon, that would be a savings of over $4,000 per year, just on the town office. So I think, not to derail the discussion, but I just think it reemphasizes the suggestion that was raised at last week's meeting, just polite suggestion to the select board to consider working with the town manager to look at potentially bulk purchase for all town facilities on propane at an aggressive pricing level to bring costs in line, make the town in a better bargaining, negotiating position with it, have a single provider at that rate, but already just for one building, $4,000 a year, I think is significant enough, despite the underground tanks, to potentially, if AmeriGas isn't going to be that aggressive, to bring things in line, to have an open mind and willingness to work with the propane supplier, even if it means putting in outside tanks. It may make a significant difference town-wide, because there's small usage still, public safety building, as well as the transfer station. Just include them in the bulk purchases, and supply for the year, and just in this building alone, a huge difference, so. I won't believe it.
No, I agree with you. I had made a note the last, when we talked about this building, about the discussion about either buying out the tanks, or new tanks, or what have you, I agree with you.
Thank you.
Office supplies, we remain the same at 500. Equipment and parts and supply, this remains at $20,000. This is for tools, lab supplies, distilled water, electric motor replacements, hardware related to the plant. We know we're keeping it the same, Zenya wanted me to note that things do continue to just get, the economy and so forth, things do continue to get more expensive. Clothing, we see an increase of $100, bringing it to 600. That's for a couple of boots, t-shirts and pants, and a jacket if needed. Chemicals, this sees an increase of $32.90. And what that is, it brings the total line to $10,290. These are chemicals required for MDP, MDEP licensing. Zenya can give you certainly more of a breakdown if you'd like it. If people want a breakdown of the chemicals, I can have them do that, or are we pretty good?
Question?
Yes?
Is this the year that we have to purchase the sodium hydroxide?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Gasoline, used for the trucks and portable generators. We've been using $4 a gallon in the other departments as well, 163 gallons. So we see a slight decrease to $650. Not a lot of gasoline usage. Diesel, on the other hand, we see an increase of $960, bringing it to 2016. That's based on an estimated 40 gallons a month, at $4.20 a gallon. And that is for the standby generator that's at the plant. And this is budgeting for using diesel for the, is it monthly, Zenya?
No, it's weekly.
Weekly, excuse me, yeah, so it's just a weekly, using about 40 gallons a month, but weekly testing and so forth, so. Exercising. Software, $100 a month, staying the same. Professional services sees an increase of $3,000. This is contract lab work for $12,000, and that's per MDEP, cannot be done by the staff at the plants, has to be outsourced. And then maintenance on plant control software, which is about $170 an hour. And this is, these increases are just due to the cost of specialized labor for these items. It can't be our, this can't be our standard IT guy that works on the systems here, for instance.
Question? Am I on the wrong side, it's less than what we already spent this year?
Yes, I had talked to, we had talked to about that, and there were some special things that came up. I can't remember exactly what they were this year.
We have two heat pumps, one at the virtual pump station, and another one in the machine control center in the treatment plant went bad, and they had to be replaced. So small one for the pump station was six grants with installation. And the big one for the MCC room, it was $10,000. And that cannot wait, because temperatures there, like if it's not running, it's 140 degrees there. So everything else will start quitting. So it was emergency expenses, like I cannot account for.
Just special circumstances is why it went over. All right, dues stays the same, $290. These are operator licenses. Training and conferences, we increased that by $150, bringing it to $900. Professional Development Certification, each of them are required of 18 hours of training every two years to maintain the certifications. And then we have mileage, which is pretty minimal at $100, because they have the electric car down there to use, as well as the pickup truck that's down there. But still in the off chance, we leave that in there. Building and maintenance remains the same at $3,000. Vehicle maintenance, again, this is for the Ford F-250 and that electric car, the Hyundai Kona, remains the same at $1,000. Both of those are fairly new, so we're not having a lot of vehicle maintenance, thankfully. Pump station maintenance, this includes six pump stations and three bridge crossings. So these are, these are infrastructure that's not located at the sewer plant itself, remains the same at $4,000. Sewer line maintenance remains the same at $3,000. This is for cleaning and maintaining lines. Sledge disposal sees an increase of $4,300, bringing it to $9,100. This is removal and disposal of processed waste at about 13 cents a gallon, disposal for hauling and disposal. Zenya is estimating about 70,000 gallons for this year, which is, which is an increase of sludge from last year, which is a good thing. Safety, reigns the same at $1,000, plant PPE and other safety equipment for the plant. Licensing fees, MDEP fees for plant operations stays the same at $14.50. And then the North End Sewer, they're, Norway's saying they aren't planning on making any changes to rates or anything like that. It's remaining the same at $59,000. And that brings us to our total of $406,81, total increase of $34,544.
Question?
Yes?
Question? On this, on the estimated 70,000 gallons disposal?
Yes.
I thought, I think when they signed the contract. I thought, I think when we signed the contract with Madison, I thought that's what we had on hand after three years.
On hand, at that time, we had 42,000 gallons, but that was COVID, so casino was not working. There wasn't generating like much wastewater. I mean, we were sitting in the situation that we had to buy a dope food to feed the bugs, because they will die and there will be no treatment plant anymore.
Right.
So the volume is back to normal, how it used to be before the COVID times.
So that's, is 70,000?
Approximately. It can be less. Again, sludge, it's pretty much like a big farm, like I have 18,000 pounds, for example, of microorganisms. Sometimes they're in the water better, sometimes they're not, like I kind of like, don't really have much control over that.
Adam, on the equipment and parts supply, Zenya, is any of that trying to stock up on some of the components that we have?
Yes, there was some critical stuff which have to be on the shelf, and especially if, even regularly five horse motor, you can be waiting for three months, which used to be like off-the-shelf item, I have to have stuff on hand. And again, prices is going up, like, I mean, something which we was going to order, was waiting like for two months, like price went like from 800 bucks to $1,000, like for the pressure transducer, like it doesn't look like anything's going to stop. So.
Anything else for Zenya? Okay, we're good with Zenya, then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see the folks from the library here. Do we want to go back to that, your municipal library?
So what would you like to know about the library budget?
So I think one of the questions is, we went from 42,500 last year up to 75,000. I think the boards are just wondering, you know, what the increase is and so forth.
Well, the increase is due to the cost of fuel, okay, and also books. There isn't anything that hasn't gone up, so in order to maintain it, plus, there was a half thing where we got pushed off to our own. So they'll account for the difference, because we're almost to the point where we're gonna not be able to buy books or anything until after the budget gets done, or at that point where it's gonna be just maybe my salary and finish up with the fuel. There's gonna be very few books, and because the library runs on books, so it really is basically books and fuel maintenance.
I have some questions. On your letter in the budget book, which I'm guessing is a typo, you state that oil has been averaging 9,000 a month.
No, that was, yes, no, it's 900, it's 900.
So the increase is 32.5. This is a summary, but it's not a budget. And what I would like to see is, I would like to see a budget that breaks down how much the phone bill is a month, how much the lights are a month, the maintenance, janitorial, everything you list. I would like to see a budget to show that what this $75,000 is going to be used for, because this really is not a budget telling us what you need. I think that, that is needed, $75,000. I think that a budget is needed to show what your expenses are for the year coming up and what they have been for this past year. In addition, I think that I would like to see a recording of your revenues. So you're operating a library, but where are you getting other revenue sources to pay for this?
It's always been the town that has been the revenue source for that.
So I think in order to provide an approval for an additional $32,000, I think it's, it makes sense that we have a budget that tells us what your costs are going to be and what they have been this year. I could not support a budget that's asking for $32,500 without telling me what that money is for. There's no breakdown. It just lists different things that you have to pay, but it doesn't tell us.
Well, they did tell me on the original paperwork you needed a breakdown. I just assumed you would realize that the things that are on here would be standard, because I'm paying more for fuel, I'm paying more for lights, I'm paying more for everything. Everybody in this room is paying more for everything, so there's no reason that the library is going to be exempt. And libraries do have expenses, and like I said, it was, we would have run out by the end of, and Anna would have told me what I'd had to entail. But being out on her own like that, just not knowing that everything had to be taken over, that you had to hire people to do things that you didn't have before, so all of that adds into that. Because for, I've been here 48 years, 49 coming up, and never have we ever, ever had an issue with any board ever saying they thought it was too much or they didn't want to give it.
Well, I guess if you're going to ask for $70,000, $75,000, which is a 76% increase, I want to know, and I think everybody should know, how much your phone bill is a month, how much all your charges are a month.
I can do that. I wouldn't have an issue with that at all.
No problem.
Okay, is anybody there would like to ask me anything?
I agree that it reached the point where it should be more of a budget thing, like all the other department budgets.
So is that it?
No, I have a question. You did say that the oil was a typo. Do you know the actual amount per month of propane?
Well, basically, the last time you came, it was 7,000.
So I'm just wondering, like, what, I assume the typo was maybe it was supposed to be 900 a month?
Right.
Okay, fine, thank you.
You said the last time they came, it was 7.
No, it was 7, it was 6, 9, 9, 1, 7, 6.
700.
Yeah, 700. Okay?
Do you know when you would have that for us?
I'll get it to you just as quick as I can. I'll be there tomorrow, and I'll do it, and I'll send it over. I'll bring it over. Okay?
Okay, Tracy, I think that you circulated to both the select board and the budget committee.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we had a couple of general administrative budgets to follow up on. Are we good to move along, Ken? So the first one would be general assistance. We dove into general assistance a little deeper this year, so it looks a little bit different. So, generally, we serve about an average of 102 GA applicants per year. We are reimbursed by the state of Maine. The average cost to the town per person is $77, and the state reimburses 70% of our costs. So if you take our average of 102, and you multiply that by 77, that brings us to our budgeted amount of $7,800. And the GA applicant numbers have been increasing, but that's taken into an account, you know, some of that, you know, increase. So feeling, feeling pretty comfortable with that amount. It just looks a little bit weird because it's less, but because of the reimbursement amounts and so forth from the state, this, that's what we would need to service that number of people, so.
Adam, is that reimbursement included on the revenues anymore?
It is not. I have not included the GA reimbursement. I should, I should double check that to make sure that it's not sneaked in there.
Because I don't see it there.
I did, I did not, I did not include it in revenues, at least I didn't intend to on purpose, because it was, we submit, we submit to the state every month for those reimbursements, so.
So it's done monthly?
Correct.
So I'm probably just not understanding the system, but why would it not be included under revenue, just the reimbursement?
Because I only included the expense to the town here. If I included in the revenue, the revenues as well, then I would have to do, like, one thing we could do is, I mean, if you wanted to budget for the entire amount.
Well, no, no. Okay, so this is only the reimbursed part.
Right, this is just showing our.
Only the town, what the town's actually paid, got it.
Yep, sorry if I didn't articulate that.
Or probably I just didn't process. I'm sure it was clear. I do what else?
That works. All right, if everybody's good with that, I'll slip to the debt. So debt service. Everybody's favorite. All right, so debt service, the first one, the PSB bond is paid off this year that we're currently in, so there's zero for this year. The new town office is new debt that we took on, nice building that we're sitting in now. The first debt service payment is $92,505. It's a 10-year note, and that will be due in the fall. And then the road TD bank loan, or bond, excuse me, which is a five-year note, that ends in 2025. This year, it's $418,216. Ambulances, or does that like to say what ambulance is? There's zero balance on that because it was paid off last year. The grader, again, is zeroed out because it was paid off last year, but I included those just so you can see the difference between last year and this year. The long-term debt for the sewer, as folks will probably remember, but for the new people on the committee, I'll just give a quick explanation. So the town has two TIPS, TIP districts, one is Route 26, and one is the Walmart TIP. Those two TIPS aid in helping us pay for the water line and the sewer upgrades. So that's why down at the bottom, you see the total debt service for sewer is 824,450, and the total for the water line is 125,666. But from town meeting, we're only needing to raise a minimal difference, $45,000 for the sewer and $90,000 for the water line, because the TIPS don't produce enough revenue to actually cover the entire debt service amount. So that's, that's why you see those differences. And in the year-to-date, you see that there's a higher number in there, and the reason that those are in there is just the transfers haven't been done from, from here to the actual, you know, TIP accounts themselves, so. So that brings us for a total projected amount of $645,721, which is a reduction from last year.
Adam?
Yes?
When is the debt on the sewer paid off?
I believe it's 2045. It's out there. We have got this right.
The water line looks like 27?
Yeah, 2045 for the sewer, and then, I think he is correct, for the water line is 27.
Who knows in that one?
It's the next page.
Okay, thanks.
I thought the water line.
It's the last page.
Again, the economic development, the water line is going to be paid off, and that's why it was going to push the money that was going to the water line to the.
I think, and it might have happened before my time. I don't think I was part of that, but I know, I mean, I can tell you that the water line debts here until 2027, but I can look more into that, so.
Because of the TIP from Walmart.
Mm-hmm.
Check what's on the other.
I'd like to follow up on that.
On the ambulance and the grader?
Yep.
Those were leases or purchases, because it's under lease?
Lease purchased, yep. So at the end of the lease, we owned it.
Because I was thinking, well, lease is paid off, come out of that.
It was, it still happened? All right, we're good there. The next one, boards and committees. I don't mean to be moving so fast. If I'm going too fast, please say something. Boards and committees, we, I had left everything the same. This is for the select board stipends, planning board stipends, and the appeals board stipends. So it remains at $14,425 across, you know, for all those positions. I think that probably next year, I'm gonna move that back in, you know, move that into the, to the administrative budget to keep it simple. And then revenues, I did include that. So I will go through all of these if you want me to, but in general, the, the method to my madness that I usually take with projecting revenues is for, for the most part, is looking at three-year averages as a prediction for what we're going to see in the, in the coming year. There are a couple of exceptions to that, one of those being excise tax, you know, for motor vehicle registrations and so forth. I mean, the town had a hell of a year, you know, in 2021, it was over a million dollars in excise tax. And then we had the following year where it was $888,000 in excise tax. My observations, which are maybe not super, but my observations is the, from what the economy's doing and so forth, is I have a really hard time believing that we're going to crest another, you know, 900 or a billion dollar year. I just think that that's a little bit silly. So that one is a little bit adjusted to, down to $870,000, just trying to, I think, keep it more realistic. The revenue sharing is another one that these last couple of years, we've seen a significant increase in revenue sharing. And is that, that data is not available, you know, as of yet, but projecting it to 540. Then I think those are the big ones I wanted to mention. Trans, excuse me, the casino revenues, those are another, those are another one of those ones that frankly, I mean, we've had, we'll have a year where we, during COVID, we were making, we were barely making a million dollars, and then we go after COVID, and we'll, you know, we hit the $2 million mark, which is wonderful, but it just seems really all over the place, and I'm really hesitant to get too ambitious with that revenue line. That's.
How is it holding thus far?
Year-to-date, when this was printed, which was now a little over a month ago, it's at $13,85, you know, $1,385,000, so. Yeah, I mean, things seem to be going along. I just, I, I'm just cautious, that's all, so. So total projected revenue of $3,744,331.
What is the line that I'll wrap?
That's the, that's from the State for Local Road Assistance Program. It stands for, it's an MDOT program.
And I don't see, I see sewer connection. And there's wastewater treatment facility. Is the wastewater treatment facility the line where the fees folks who are hooked and businesses are hooked up pay, or where is that accounted for?
Wastewater treatment facility, that line is them paying their bills.
Okay.
Yep. And North End Sewer is broken out separately. And then next, so, are we good there? I'm sorry. So next, I'd like to hit on capital. Now, based on conversations with the board selection, I'm making, I'm working with the fact that on a case-by-case basis, the selection will probably be considering the capital request. Now, I'm about to pass it out. So based on, based on what the selection have discussed, is on a case-by-case basis, they'll be considering from the fund balance account, the capital, capital requests for the individual departments, so that doesn't need to go to town meeting. The ones that do need, however, be considered for the budget cycle here are some contributions to some of the reserve accounts. $5,000 to the cemetery reserve account. This is for general maintenance and repairs at the cemetery, or cemeteries. We've done that in the last few years, as well as the sewer department, a $45,000 contribution to the reserve account. And this is for wastewater treatment facility for future repairs and potential, you know, over, you know, expensive equipment, you know, those kind of things. So it's a total reserve request of $50,000. Sorry I didn't get that to you before.
Just to be clear on that, Adam, you're saying that that is coming out of the reserve account and going to be a part of the taxation bill?
These $50,000, this $50,000. These fifty thousand, this fifty thousand dollars, I, I'm putting that forward as a town meeting item, so it would be.
It would be raised through taxes?
Raised and appropriated at town meeting, yep.
Can I ask what the total items were that the select board approved in terms of the amount from the reserve fund for capital?
So thus far, it was just the police vehicle, and that has up to sixty thousand, and that has to, when the bid, final bid comes in, they're going to have to approve that expenditure, and then it was the GIS mapping, which was thirty, I mean, around thirty-two? Thirty-eight thousand, yeah, that.
So that was it?
And that's it thus far, yep.
Okay, so then the other question is, I know up at least till last year, if not the year before, there was a line from the fire department for.
Turnout gear?
No.
Oh.
For a ladder truck, extension truck, and that was well north into seven figures. So I don't know what the status of that is, whether there's set aside or if that's just being pushed off, at least not considered in the year's cycle.
So in the, in the proposed capital request, there's a two-hundred-and-fifty, I made a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar recommendation that we, we consider transferring to the reserve account for a truck. I know that that's going to be discussed further, and the fire chief's going to need to discuss that further, so.
So that'll be from existing funds rather than taxes, great. So I just want to thank the select board for the way they've been handling the capital budgets. And, and Adam, again, you as well as town manager, that the fiscal management has been, the last several years, permitted quite a bit of reserve funds to be built up, and that they're being very well managed in terms of handling the capital budgets without passing it on to the taxpayers, so I appreciate that. Do you want to agree with that, Henry?
He did, actually, I saw him nod.
He was shaking his head.
Don't ruin the moment.
I have a nervous problem, my head moves a lot.
I think that's the first stage he's attacking.
It's not that he's falling asleep on us.
I'd like to, I, I.
When it was first brought to my attention, came on board about the reserve account. I was not aware that we had one, as I remember the budget committee. We raised everything to taxes, and this money just sat out there in la-la land. And thanks to Adam, I was brought up to speed that there was a reserve account, that there was available for expenditures, but they had to get a handle on it, and I appreciate you doing that along with the boards. And I realize you could take that money out of the reserve account and apply it towards the tax base rather than purchasing, and the tax would be a lot less, but I think the whole, the whole intent of that was to have that money available for these major capital purchases rather than having to take any piece of taxes for the townspeople that are here. So along with Joe, I congratulate you people, and just keep up the good work. Please.
Does the budget committee provided that list of potential capital?
We have been. From the past, yes, we have been.
This year, this year.
I can send it out to you if you want.
Do it.
I think they should have it, it hasn't all been approved, and it might not all get approved that way.
Right.
They should know.
Well, what it does, it gives us an indication.
Right.
I, I think it's about one point three million.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send that to all of you, I'm sorry.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I know.
Is, is there a particular criteria that you use to decide whether it should be raised through taxes or come from the reserve?
So the reason that those are on there is that those are, the way that I look at it is, those are specific raising money for those specific purposes, so it feels like that should be a, a town meeting decision. The other, the other items are, you know, requested by the individual departments, and we do have that, as Henry was saying, in, you know, in our fund balance account, so it doesn't seem like it's just necessary, but. Alright, we're good, go back to, or go to the police department budget? Pulling up, I can see it in his face, he's really excited.
I can see the chair is not plugged in.
See, it's not plugged in, that's crazy. Watch out for a window. Yeah. Alright, so with the police department budget, just a couple of quick disclaimers. So it's similar to, God, I can't believe we're going to compare it to the fire department. Anyway, the fire department and police department both had an addition of extra personnel. So what you're going to see on the police department's budget is there's a line item in there labeled new additional officer, and that is the total for that individual officer, and I'll talk more about that in just a moment. And at the end of the budget for the total, you see a police department budget total of one million, seventy-three thousand, two seventy-three, which is a sixty-six thousand dollar increase over last year. Or if you choose to add or support the additional officer, then you'll see an increase of one point one five, three million dol, or, excuse me, you'll see a total budget of one point one five, three million dollars. So I tried to break it down so that we have the, keep things the same versus if we add an additional person. So with that, I'll get printed. So salary line, the regular payroll sees an increase of forty-six thousand, eight seventy-four, bringing the total to six hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven oh three. It's important to note that we had a, the union negotiations this last year for both the sergeant's agreement and the patrolman's agreement. In order to remain competitive, there had to be some, some wage adjustments, and when I mean competitive, I don't mean with, you know, I don't mean with Portland, I mean with our, our neighbors and so forth, Mechanic Falls in Norway and so forth. Additional, additional officer, that's what I was just talking about, the seventy-nine thousand and sixteen dollars includes everything with the exception of workers' comp. And so workers' comp would be an additional thirty-four, seventy-six, so I caught that.
How much more?
Three thousand, four hundred and seventy-six.
Question for you, new officer, would this be the time to raise that?
If you want to, or we can go through the rest and we can, I think he's pretty ready to get into it whenever you want, so.
If you want to run through the rest, then I can use a question on that.
Sorry, I have to go to the rest and then come back.
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you. Overtime, this is for holiday vacations, sick court and so forth, remains the same, fifty thousand dollars. The EMA stipend, this is a small stipend of eight hundred dollars that goes to, sometimes it goes to the police chief, and sometimes it'll go to the fire chief, who has taken the reins on that, I've just remained to leave it in the police budget. Reserves, remains the same at twenty thousand dollars, and as you know, reserve officers are part-time police officers that can, you know, fill open shifts and help with special events. Social Security, Medicare, those seen, Social Security sees an increase of twenty-eight, fifty-seven, bringing it to forty-three, seventy-two. Medicare, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, bringing it to ten, ten thousand, seventy-three dollars, those again are based on payroll. Health insurance sees a fourteen thousand, two hundred and five dollar increase, bringing it to one hundred and thirty-four thousand, three fifty-three. There's six currently enrolled in various plans, and we have three who are opting out. Retirement sees an increase of forty-two, oh, three, bringing it to seventy-four, three, twenty-seven. This is all through the main state retirements that are main purs and is based on payroll. Workers' comp, which I alluded to earlier, if we stay a status quo, sees an increase of nine, one thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars, which brings a total of twenty-five thousand, three eighty-three, but if we add that new officer, it's an increase of an additional three thousand, four seventy-six. Telephone remains the same, three thousand, four ninety-two. Office supplies remains the same at four thousand dollars. Postage remains the same at three thirty-four. Firearms, maintenance and ammo remains the same at ten thousand dollars. Clothing remains the same at eight thousand dollars. I did note in there that a new officer equates to, what, forty-five hundred dollars for all of that stuff. Computer maintenance, we remain the same at two thousand dollars, this is for the IT and off-site file storage. Gasoline, using about seven thousand, eight, seven thousand and eight gallons per year, average of four dollars, or projected four dollars a gallon, brings us to twenty-eight thousand, thirty-two dollars, which is a slight decrease of three thousand. Software, this is an increase of two hundred and four dollars, bringing it to two thousand, seven hundred and four. This is the Spillman software that they use, which is like their database and dispatch software. It connects them to the county. Dare remains the same at a thousand. And note the SRO is the dare officer. Drug testing sees a decrease of fifteen hundred dollars, bringing it down to fifteen hundred dollars, and the reason for that is it's a hundred and fifty-five dollars per kit, but one of the things that's changed is they're only being charged a fee for the test kits when it involves a felony case, is that correct, chief?
To have them tested.
At the lab?
For felonies.
Okay. Community relations and training supplies remains the same at two thousand. Criminal expenses has been reduced down to a thousand, which is a thousand-dollar decrease. The reason for that is, much like the highway department, collective bargaining agreement portion is over, so that just remains there for grievances or, you know, other things of the like. Membership dues sees an increase of two hundred dollars, bringing it to seven hundred and fifty. Publications sees a decrease of a hundred dollars, and that's based on the literature they need to buy, the, the law books, the seventeen and twenty-nine As. Training.
Can I jump in for just a moment?
Yes, sir, yep.
Chief, is it possible to get this information you need for Title twenty-nine A and seventeen A off the computer rather than getting the actual publications?
I could probably print them off, it would be in a full size like this instead of a book.
I didn't see, no, I want to check out the statute, I just want the computer to look at it.
So, not, not to answer for the chief, I can attest to the fact that when you're sitting in the car in the middle of the night, it's a lot easier to have that little Bible there. Old, old school sometimes is better when it comes to that, but.
I'm just.
I didn't mean to answer that for you.
No, thank you.
Big time.
Sure.
Training and conferences remains the same at seventy-five hundred. This is the MCJ, the main criminal justice required training for the, each individual officer to remain, to remain certified in their professional development. They are now using an online program, Police One, or Police One Training Online, instead of, what was it? JPMA?
JPMA.
Let's see, equipment maintenance and supply, this is now four thousand dollars, which is a fifteen hundred dollar increase, and this includes the, now includes the RICO copier, as I've noted in there, a hundred and twenty-seven dollars a month for the police departments. Vehicle maintenance remains the same at thirteen thousand. ACO supplies is, remains the same at a thousand, and just as a reminder, the salary line includes the animal control officers as well. We didn't forget him. So that brings us to the end of those items, so brings us back to the additional officer up here, so. You had some questions, Joe?
Yes, please, before we get to that, mentioned the school resource officer. My memory serves me right, wasn't there grant funding for that position?
Yep.
Is that still ongoing, or is that running out at some point?
Yep, so the grant comes to a conclusion this year, and we all.
Twenty-two, twenty-three?
Right, the one we're in right now, yep. So the school resource officer is included in the payroll amount for the police department. It was last year, you know, in the last couple of years as well.
The full amount?
Yep, the full amount's included.
And then the grant comes back through revenue, or, what did you do?
So, so what, we finally just, just now have received reimbursement for the last two, the first two years of it, and we're working on receiving reimbursement for the current year. So that revenue was not accounted for in the past, so it was, it was budgeted for the full boat, and it was raised and appropriated the full boat for that, you know, for that position. So this is the first year we're just getting it all at once now, so. We also receive revenue from the school, because we invoice down for a portion thereof of that officer as well. So it kind of works out so that the grant was paying for seventy-five percent, and then the school was paying for twenty-five percent, roughly. So I've already talked to the superintendent for this coming year, and they're interested in signing a, you know, doing another contract, you know, for an SRO and paying their portion.
What's their portion going to be then?
Well, I think that's something we're going to need to talk about.
Oh, alright, Dave.
I mean, I, the way that they've been being billed is for one thousand, one hundred and forty-eight hours, I think, which is the equivalent of the, you know, the school year, but I think those fees probably need to be looked at and adjusted accordingly, so. In an email with Dana earlier, it's going to be added to the sixth as an agenda item for discussion, so.
Because the question then would be, that was potentially seventy-five percent, depending on what school district's willing to kick in. So is that seventy-five percent included in the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budget here, or is that not?
The school resource officer, his salary line is one hundred percent included under regular payroll.
Okay, so that's already accounted for in the current.
One hundred percent, yep.
Then I guess the other question would be, as an offset, you can put an impact when taxes are calculated, with the income of that revenue now for two years just coming in, how's that going to be accounted for as total revenues?
So that's another question or a conversation that I'm going to have with the board selection on where to place those funds. I, I think that, I mean, this year, for this current year, it certainly can help us, you know, offset some of the costs we've had in the salary line, you know, on this year, but the other, other years, where we're going to place the money will be a conversation that's going to happen on the sixth.
Okay.
I certainly can hazard some guesses where I'd like to see.
Yeah, no, I get that, but I just, it's, taking kind of a broad view, because it comes up with this, I can see it coming up in the conversation about the proposed new position, or any time the departments are adding personnel, if we budget for a position, right, that's going to be included in the calculus for the budget for the coming year. And it's going to be done so in such a way that it's, the town is going to assume that salary line and associated costs in the coming year's budget, and that's going to get passed on to the taxpayers to fulfill, whether it's a filled position or not. And so, for instance, in this case, the SRO, we're not collecting, the town hasn't collected, until now, the money that has already been budgeted by the taxpayers for that salary line, it may not, it, it isn't going to go there, it's going to go for something else. I guess it's just my concern that there's the potential to have these line items in the budget, that the taxpayers are funding for the intent of a specific purpose, and then down the line, unfulfilled, the money's still coming into the town, and granted, we've got great managers, as I pointed out, but there's always a possibility that something may change and that money goes off elsewhere. And it just doesn't sit well with me for that, I mean, does that make sense, folks?
Yeah, I mean, it makes a hundred percent sense, and I think that, you know, this year, this year's rein, this year's reimbursement makes sense for it to go right back to what it was intended for. The past years, I mean, there's a couple of bookkeeping things you can do, you can go, you know, go back in time, and you can add it to reimbursements of that expense line in past budget years, but then where it's going to end up going is right into the unassigned fund balance anyways. So that is pretty much exactly the direction that I would like to go, not necessarily go back and modify the books of yesteryear. So, that is pretty much exactly the direction that I would like to go, not necessarily go back and modify the books of yesterday year, but is it led to fall, fall into that cycle, so then it just goes into the unassigned fund balance cycle anyway. It doesn't fix the fact of what happened the last couple of years, but it does put it back into that, into that role, so it's not just a matter of, oh, we'd like to put it in the sewer department or something like that.
Is that normally how that works, when you get a grant money? I mean, this isn't the first time we've been involved with that. It takes them two years to pay in?
Um, this took a long time, and it is, but federal grants take a long time to usually get reimbursement, but this was a little longer than usual, yeah.
So, basically, we funded that officer since day one?
Correct.
But we had to anyways before.
I get it, I get it, I get it, but I, you know, I don't think it's ever been explained that way before, or I didn't interpret that way.
But you've been billing the.
Annually, yeah.
So, I mean, we've been, we've been the one subject for the twenty-five percent, waiting for that.
She's been waiting for the seventy-five percent.
We've been waiting for all of it, Paul.
The district has paid their twenty-five, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Each year?
Yep.
It's the seventy-five percent from the past that has it.
Maybe you didn't understand it either.
I guess I did.
Are there any of the twenty-five percent from the school, one of these revenue lines?
It is, it is not lots. It needs to, that needs to be added. So, these, this is, these are a couple of things that, as I dug into the SRO earlier, actually earlier today, that need to be added. So, the, in the revenue, the twenty-five percent for the school, um, needs to be added, and then the ten thousand for the recreation needs to be added as well. Remember, we talked about that, so, in the final draft.
When you're given a grant from the federal government, don't you have to spend that, true that it was spent for the purposes the grant was given before you get the reimbursement?
Yep.
So, you're always going to be a year behind?
Yep.
Sounds like we're.
Not usually two or three.
I, well, I just look at Washington DC and it describes it, we're not twenty years behind.
Yeah, so every, every year, finance has to submit all that documentation of hours and all that stuff.
So, have you had questions? I don't want to clog the floor here.
Any questions, that's fine. I'll wait for you. I'll need to follow up.
So, um, the costs included on the line to seventy-nine zero one six, does that include putting the new officer through police academy training?
No, um, if he needs, if he or she needs to go to the police academy, there is, um, there is a contingency reserve account that I believe has about a twenty thousand dollar balance in it, and that's something I would recommend to the Board of Selectmen look at if we had to send an officer to the academy.
Does the new officer need a new vehicle purchased for use, or do we have any vehicles to, can you enter that?
Right now, we have enough vehicles that we can move out of.
Right now, this current year as well as next year, there's fifty thousand dollars budgeted for overtime. So, if we add another officer with full salary, um, how much of that overtime is anticipated to be offset, and should that be covered for in the budget, is less overtime required?
So, we didn't, frankly, we didn't go that direction. My hope is that we do see a reduction in overtime if we have an additional officer, because there'll be less need for, for that. One could even argue that we might even have less need for reserve officers to be working if we have an additional officer. But we didn't go into, go into the weeds quite that far, um, hoping to have, if, if the additional officer is approved, and we see that we don't need quite as much overtime in the future, we, you know, cut that back afterwards, is pretty much what we thought.
Uh, that overtime amount currently, isn't that been caused by the lack of the officer position being filled? So, now that, now that has been filled, okay?
Yes.
That should decrease the overtime requirements in the future by filling that position.
Not necessarily. Because the union, any, any vacancy that's open by a full-time officer has to be offered to other full-time officers first. So, they can create an overtime situation. If Scott, police officer, he takes a vacation, those days that he's off need to be offered to all the other full-time officers first, per their labor agreement. If those other full-time officers all take those days off, and they're in an overtime situation, it's going to be overtime that you can't get away from. And that's across the board, any police agency with a contract like that, you're going to have overtime. It probably can be reduced some, I would think, but you're not going to get rid of all of it, because you can't.
Then just don't offer the overtime.
Then you go short, because you can't offer it to somebody else first, it's not allowed. How many, how many open, do you have any open positions right now?
Right now, we just filled all the one that we had, so not.
No, you don't have any, okay.
So, how long, wasn't that open for about a year?
No, wow, since Michael left, yes.
So, it, I mean, this past budget year?
Yes.
So, we have both nine, nine full-time police officers in various positions. For the past budget year, one of those has not been filled, so you've been operating with eight full-time officers.
Correct.
And, and you're asking for a tenth.
So, technically, you, I didn't mean to cut it.
That's okay.
Technically, you're going to end up with two new police officers this year? So, this will fill the open position that we have had. The, the extra one I'm asking for would be another one to help fill a rotation that's in our schedule. Again, but you, you, you'd have two more people than you had last year?
Yes.
So, to continue on to make a point is that this past year, we've been operating with eight. And that person was just hired. So, you don't know what it would look like at this point if you actually had the nine that we have now, because you haven't had nine yet. So, my hesitation in bringing on a tenth officer is because you've been operating with eight, should have had nine, and now you wanted them. So, that's where I have a problem with, and a concern that you don't really know at this point if you need a tenth because you've been operating with eight when you're supposed to have nine. So, I think I've said that probably different ways or whatever, but I would like to wonder why you can't wait until next year to assess your situation, because now you, you're going to have nine. And the other point too that I wanted to make is, if it took you, what, three years to fill that one position? Are we going to budget for another position that just stays open, the money is there? That money, it's just going to roll over into the general fund next year, if you can't fill the position. Because the money for the, the ninth officer that we budgeted for in current year, that money hasn't been used, so it's going to roll over. So, I, I don't think it makes sense to do that this year. I'm not saying you don't need it.
Yep.
But I'm saying that I can't see a justification for a tenth officer.
When I was looking at the budget and realized there was a vacant position, you just filled the, uh, my recommendation would be to take this next fiscal year, take a looking at your full roster, and then come back and determine whether or not, so what you really need the tenth, or you just need a part-time. That's what my recommendation would be.
And part of this too, asking for the tenth officer, we had lost three reserves in one month, and so it made it even harder to fill shifts. So, and then, of course, with the current trends that we're dealing with right now, with numbers and harass and summers as we're writing and all that, trying to keep up with what I feel is the growth of the town, and trying to keep up with that so that in the future, we don't fall behind in all sorts of other work. You know, we're not keeping up with the calls, the complaints, the investigations.
So, the other question, where you have seventy-nine thousand sixteen dollars. It, is one entry-level officer with benefits, do those benefits include the health insurance, what, the retirement? Is there an amount for retirement in the RKC officer? Chooses retirement, the health insurance at the maximum, because we don't know that officer would need for insurance, and social security and Medicare as well?
That contemplates the, an entry-level officer enrolling in health insurance as a single person, and also enrolling in the main purse, but as I noted earlier, does not include the workers' compensation piece, which is that thirty-four I mentioned, or thirty-four hundred I mentioned earlier.
So, the social security and Medicare?
Are also included, yes, ma'am, yeah. Just had a workers' comp.
So, you have, you're looking to get the tenth officer to fill a position in rotation, how do you run your shifts now?
Right now, same way we do the boys, we have, the guys will work, one guy will work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Let's go back. He'll start, he'll work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday off, then work Thursday, Friday, uh, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It rotates, so there's one on each rotation, which means there's always one, one guy that's working a weekend, a full weekend. So, a sergeant works two to two, and he is on one of those rotations. The opposite rotation has no sergeant. So, there's two guys out for the busiest times on one rotation, the other rotation, sure. We've been trying to make up for that with reserves, which we've lost three now, so it's been hard to do that, to keep up for the busiest time.
What happens if, I see this is entry level, what happens if you have somebody who's quite experienced who comes on board? Is he going to come in at entry level, is he going to be?
Oh, probably not.
Right.
Right.
So, but we're only budgeting for entry level.
Yep, we included entry level, because, I mean, frankly, I mean, you can do the hypotheticals. I mean, you could, you could do a hypothetical that the person.
Well, this is hypothetical.
Right, it is hypothetical. You could go the direction that the person has got experience. I think they can start on step.
Five.
Five. They can start on step five, they could have a full family for health insurance, which would all, you know, which would increase all of it too. And, of course, that would increase the retirement line as well, if their payroll was higher.
So, I, I have lots of questions, but I'm not sure it's much appropriate, or more of the manpower, where they're at, more of a selectmen issue, selectmen's meeting issue. So, Nikki can probably correct me, so, for the last several years, structural-wise, we had achieved. We had a captain or lieutenant, this one point, and I don't care if that position is a captain or a lieutenant or.
Or sergeant or whatever.
Whatever in that position, that, that second in command, so to speak, was always the detective, wasn't it?
Yes.
When you were in that position, you were the detective?
I was.
When you were in that position, you were the detective, under Chief Kugel. When you were the chief, Mike Ward was the detective. So, and now we, looking through the labor contract, we have a detective stipend, didn't we? So, does that mean we have two detectives?
No, we'll have one detective. The side, the captain, though, will help oversee and also help with those investigations, because the numbers have grown so much, it, it's impossible for one person to do that alone.
So, that, that's kind of what I'm asking, you need a detective plus almost, almost two detectives, perhaps?
Norway has two detectives. We're trying to, we're trying to do it with one and make it so the captain oversees it and assists with that.
Okay.
So, when he starts to get buried, there's, there's some help there.
But that's, so, it was, I, I must be confused, because I thought the captain's position was the only position that was open currently. But we've hired a new patrolman, still don't have a captain.
So, correct. So, we've hired the new patrolmen, so we had one position open in the department. The chief has been working on an internal process with the individuals that are current, you know, the current, currently on the department. He is looking at doing an internal promotion. That was held off, that was held off on, because of mine, so I asked him to hold off. And so, now that we have the patrol position filled, we're going to be looking to try and fill and move that up, so.
But, so, we're, we're budgeted for nine full-time officers. We have nine full-time officers now, and that's what you're asking for, an additional, so if somebody from, out of those nine, eight, because you're not, you're not go back to the captain's position, but if one of those other officers gets promoted to that, we're going to have another patrol vacancy, but you don't have a vacancy, because there's only nine budgeted.
So, one, one of those sworn officers, one of those sworn officers, so when we say nine, we have nine sworn police officers. Obviously, so, one of them is going to get promoted to captain, but that doesn't mean that there's going to be an open patrol. It's cheap, it's cheaper to have a, you know, patrol officer, which is what we've done right now, knowing that we're doing the internal process and one of them's going to get promoted, but that doesn't mean there's going to be an opening. Am I saying that stupid?
You are. We have two sergeants right now. If one of those get promoted, that's, one sergeant's position is not going to get filled. Doesn't mean that there's nobody in that position, it's just we're not going to have a sergeant for it.
Well, so what, one of the sergeants is not doing sergeant work right now, they're doing the patrol.
That's the problem. He's doing sergeant work, he's doing patrol work, he's doing investigations.
He said one of the shifts doesn't have a sergeant over that.
Right.
Is this something that you could go over, Nick Slutman's meeting, and have this all set up, so we can go over and discuss it all?
And I thought this was where we'll put it on the agenda.
I just, I think, well, again, Budget Committee, they, they need as much information as they can, because between them and us, deciding what we're going to do for the budget, and other, you know, I think some people have already, we want to look at that ninth officer that we have, and not add a tenth, but if we need the tenth, that might sway some opinions another way, so. It's important for them, the Budget Committee, to have as much information as they can when it comes time for that. So, when relative to the budget process, which is hopefully going to be closed down in the next two weeks, how do you envision addressing that through the Select Board in terms of the time line?
So, the next Selectment's meeting is on the sixth of April. And that's also the same night that the budget, budget calendar contemplates voting on the finalization of the budget. I certainly am not trying to tell anybody their opinions or what to do, or any of those kind of things. I know that now where we're at with the police department, we currently, with the new hire as of just now, you know, just recently, it's fully staffed. It's just an internal, it's an internal thing on whether or not that promotion is going to happen to that captain's position. So, um, I think I agree, definitely a Selectmen discussion to maybe look at job descriptions and talk about who's doing what and shifts and so forth, but I think it's really a matter of, is there a need for that tenth additional sworn officer, really, is what's on the table, so. I don't, I just don't want to delay.
But if you do, if you promote to a sergeant or captain, typically you promote a patrolman to a sergeant, which would then leave a patrol position.
But what we've, what we've done, knowing that the chief has been working through the process of the promotion, I believe he's ready to be, to promote somebody to the captain's position. We had an entry-level person that we could pick up, which is what we picked up. So, we, in essence, we're down a captain, but we have an extra patrolman, so we just need to shift people. And he's been waiting on that promotion, because I want, well, I wanted him to wait so we could save some money for a while and not have to pay the captain, so.
So, when we get to promotion, that, there'll be some extra money put in for the promotion, I'm sure it comes through the wage increase, correct?
It's already in it, you've already been budgeting for a captain.
Yep, yes.
So, it's already in there, or it isn't? I guess that's my question.
So, right now, that's a good point.
Well, I. When we passed the budget last year.
I encourage you to be hard to get along.
No, 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 I know you're not, I know you're not.
Even though we knew that Mike was retired.
Yep.
We still budgeted for the captain's position for this fiscal year, even though we knew that, we figured it was going to be big. It was going to be filled and out, so we funded it. The funding is there.
Yes.
It'll be, and then again, it's going to be in for next year, uh, because we're just increasing what we had last year. So, the captain's position will be funded for this coming fiscal year, because it's a part of the budget already, right?
It doesn't show that in here.
You're correct.
It's not in, no. There's no captain budgeted.
Right, the position.
When you look at the sheet in your budget book.
Yeah.
The patrol sergeants, the patrol officers, there's no, there's no amount budgeted for a captain.
Right. There's an individual budget for, but you're, you are correct, Lloyd, you are correct.
Yeah, we get there in a minute.
Yep. So that increase in pay specifically for that position over what they would be making as a potential sergeant, you're correct, is, is not, is not included. So that would be whatever that negotiated amount is.
John, I have a follow-up. When you explained how if the sergeant was promoted to captain, then the, they would look for a patrol officer to go to sergeant, that's then going to leave a patrol officer. So, and that's out of the nine, so that would.
Really, I was looking, out of the eight, Chief Jack is a nine, I mean, Chief Jack's a nine, though.
I, I don't know. So in that scenario you're talking about, then because you're going to, then you would have a chief, a captain, two sergeants, and would you have to then hire another patrol officer? If, if the, if the union contract states you have to have so many?
It doesn't state. It doesn't state how many.
It doesn't state how many we have to have.
Okay. So when, in the scenario you gave, would another officer have to be hired? Because that would leave that one open.
But, well, I agree, the chief has, I, I technically, no.
Okay.
But it leaves a shift open. In order, correct me if I'm wrong, chief. In order to run the shifts, it takes four patrolmen and two sergeants.
It does, and I don't have that.
And so, yeah, what he, what he has now with eight, so it's four patrolmen, two sergeants.
And an SRO.
Investigator, or SRO, and himself.
Right, and he hasn't had that in the past three years, anyway, right?
There are nine funded.
There are nine funded positions.
There's nine funded.
You've got nine.
Yeah.
Take yourself out of that.
Yep.
You've got eight.
There's eight.
Yeah.
Okay, so you just said four and two, six, then you've got two investigators, right?
We've got SRO, and we have one investigator.
Okay, the SRO is included in that money?
Yes.
That's what it's.
Yes, yes.
But that's part-time?
Full-time.
No, it's full-time.
It's only part-time reversed.
It's, it's budgeted full-time, for the full-time.
He only works part-time at the school, then he works for the private pool.
Right, in the summer, in the summer, basically, he is ours.
And at night, he can even use yours.
If I have to.
So it's a full-time officer.
Overtime.
That works as an SRO during school time, and the rest of the time works as a full-time police officer on duty.
When school's noncessional.
Yeah. So that's why in the budget, you budget for a full-time patrol officer. And then the duties are split to where they go, whether it's to the school or to on the police payroll.
Is that always that way, John? I thought they only worked that way. You can set them up that way.
You, you, well, you can, but I mean.
That was the contract that we had.
I was never successful in getting grants for an SRO, that was it, so.
But we were in the county, and they only work.
And.
And right now, to be honest with you, with the SRO at full-time, there's not enough of him to go around. The self-campus, the elementary school are fighting over him every day, wanting him in their schools. And the road units are getting called into the schools.
Times change.
The SRO is a, is a very valuable asset.
I'm looking at this diagram of the people you have on board, and I can only see eight, including the chief. There's only seven positions listed here.
Because when that was made, we hadn't hired the new person that we just hired for the open position.
Yeah, but it was already funded, am I right?
Yes.
No, it wasn't listed, it's, it was funded, just eight of them. And I'm confused, I see seven, you're talking eight, now you're talking nine, you're going ten. And I know that that position is funded, but it's not listed.
Let's see if this updated on the, here.
I see eight.
I see my chief.
I see eight.
I'm not hiring the SRO.
And that counts one of them, right?
He's one of them.
He's one of those.
Yeah.
Okay, so then he is, I guess he is.
He's one of those, one of those eight. He is one of those eight.
He is one of the eight.
Well, actually, he's not ours, because he, if he works for you after school, it's overtime.
He doesn't work for me after the school, unless we have to do overtime. He works for me during school vacation, or during the summer when he's gone, not gone for the military.
Well, the, I would say, I would suggest very strongly that you sign an agreement with the school, they pay for the overtime, they want it, they got it.
I think that might be something to discuss.
And that would be for next year going forward, yeah.
It'd make it clear in my mind, and my mind's been older. One other question I have, is the captain a part of the CDA?
No.
So he, he, he'd be like the chief.
Sailor.
Sailor, okay. I think so.
Since, since you were the captain, chief.
Yes.
How did we get to, how did we go from lieutenant to captain? And I've heard that it was because you've been with the department a long, long time. They thought the promotion was good, got you a little bit more money, I'm assuming you got a raise.
I did.
From lieutenant to captain.
Well, I, I never was a lieutenant. I went from sergeant to a captain.
They put you in there, okay.
Yeah, that's what Michael chose to do at the time.
And I, very good. Nothing says we need to have a captain or a lieutenant or whatever, just to be clear. That probably depends on who you select for that position, and how many years of service they have, maybe experience, all that.
Yeah, and I'm not going to pick you over a captain or lieutenant.
You can call him the deputy chief if you want to.
Yeah.
There was a, there was a difference, there was a difference with the collective bargaining unit, between lieutenant and captain.
I don't think lieutenant is listed in that.
It's not the collective bargaining.
It's not like that, no.
Not.
Going to the five previous town areas, you know. Lieutenant could be part of the bargaining.
But he has to be listed.
Right, but he, yeah, that position's not included in the one that we just finished, so.
No, is it in the UPA?
No.
I, I would support lieutenant, knowing that if it's not someone that's been here a long time, there's something you can look forward to as a promotion as a lieutenant, if the chief's going to be the chief for many, many years.
Hopefully.
See what I'm saying?
It'll need changes.
To have that ability to advance it.
Yes, yep.
Usually when you do that is when you get somebody who's at the top of their pay grade, and then you can create a new pay grade.
And the captain position, when I got promoted to that, was a brand-new position for us, yes. And we have had a lieutenant in the past.
So if you do, you make your lieutenant your captain, you eliminate your lieutenant.
Just, I think that is, is a.
That's a better discussion.
Yeah, that's a.
On whether it's going to be.
I mean, that's a way for somebody who's at the school to move out, if that you create a new scale.
Rick, could you tell me the percentage of increase in following over the last two years, two days?
Well, I can give you some numbers that I crunched real quick, because they're, they're ever-changing right now. And the way that we search them, it, it depends on how they're being coded. But what I, what I can tell you is, for right now, I'm going to start with the arrests and summonses, and then I'll, I'll break it down into the, the other numbers. Today's date, for Oxford PD, we're at seventy-six arrests, and I'm going to break it down into all the departments. Paris PD's got sixteen, Noway PD has twenty-eight, and Oxford County has fifty-nine. So, trying to defend the fact that we're not trying to be arrest-heavy, or we're arresting people that we feel need to be on bail conditions.
Can I, can I just?
Go ahead.
Of that, do you have that broken down into what, it comes out of the casino?
Well, I can tell you, the casino, last year, we responded there two-hundred-and-fifty-six times. This year, already, we've been there eighty-two times. But, with that being said, Walmart, we was there two-hundred-and-fifty-five times, which is one less than the casino, and we've been there sixty-six times this year already.
Since January.
Since January first. So I, I really hate to pick on the casino, when, I mean Walmart is running rate number to number with them. So.
Are your calls at the casino, they're calling you to show up?
They're calling us, yes, yep.
It's not something you're.
Not, not self-generated, no, no. So to go back, after reading those arrest numbers, just to show that, and we're not trying to be arrest-heavy, summonses this year alone from January first to now, Oxford PD has issued forty-two, Paris PD has issued seven, Noway PD has done twenty-nine, and Oxford County has done thirty-three. And, and I'm going to pick on Oxford County just a little bit. They've got close to thirty sworn officers. We're at forty-two summonses, they're at thirty-three. Our call volume here has exploded in the past year to year and a half. And just trying to keep up with all these investigations, the calls, we used to get assistance from the state police to help us with some of the investigations, and the surveillance details that we was doing. Now that they've restructured, there was two investigators that helped us, they're gone, we've lost that resource. So for us to keep up doing these investigations, it costs us overtime. I haven't had the help, we just filled that ninth position, he hasn't even started yet. So, which is exciting that we've got that done. And then, and then you want to talk about mutual aid.
Not to interrupt you on the call volume, just for the benefit of those in the room, does the call volume include traffic stops?
The call volume?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. No, I'm sorry. Our call, not for us, it does not. The reason I use it that way is Noway PD's does. They start a number every time they stop a vehicle. We don't, because I can tell you what those numbers are by either citations issued or warnings issued. So I don't, I don't, I have, I have to look you in the face and show you these are legit numbers. So that's why I do it that way. We've done it that way for, for quite a while. So, to continue though, last year, Oxford PD covered four-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-six calls. Right now, we're, we're at one-thousand-and-eleven calls. Paris PD's at eight-hundred-and-eighty, Noway PD's eight-hundred-and-forty-one, and County is at three-thousand-and-fifty-seven. And I can go back, I did twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one. I didn't do twenty-twenty, because that was a COVID year, so that was, obviously, everything was different.
Nobody moved it.
Yeah. So, but our call volume here is, with the growth of the town, the amount of people that we are seeing coming and going, we're dealing with people that honestly aren't from this area, and they're not here for good reasons. The homicides that just happened in Poland, that suspect that they arrested for that, a month and a half before this happened, we tased him in the trailer park. These are the types of people that we're dealing with. Our, our drug numbers have gone out of sight. I don't have those exact numbers. It's hard for me to do drug numbers unless I actually sit there and almost count everyone for the way that they're coded.
Chief, the numbers you just presented to us, and obviously because you put it in your budget, do you feel that with the doctors you have now and the call volume increase, that you have enough resources to dramatically, A, fixes the lawsuit, and provide services that?
Yes, we're doing, yes.
Okay, so going back to you adding the, the other officer in. I don't know, I just, only because we deal with you a lot of times. Drug traffic, it seems to be a big thing up to the casino.
Can't deny that. It is in Walmart's.
I'm looking at this, I'm, I'm looking at this, chief, as that, this town takes in a lot of money from the casino. Walmart, I would say, is probably one of our larger property tax, property in its town, which are, seem to be two of our areas that require the services of our police department more than, I would say, probably the rest of the town. I guess, I, I'm, I look at that as that, while we have, while we're managing.
We're managing.
While we're not gaining.
Absolutely not.
Would that be a fair statement?
It would be fair, okay. And the other thing that I'm dealing with is, is when we've been at one position, sure, but morale. Because these, I'm going to be honest with you, these guys are working their tails off, trying to keep up with everything. They get frustrated quite a lot, and then of course, we have to deal with vacations, sick time, so that adds.
You, you brought up vacation, and I know that we talked about, when we talked about the school resource officer, was that part of, of making that a year-round position was that during the summertime, when he's not tied up for vacations, you know, he's helping to alleviate, alleviate some of the overtime that would normally would be occurred, because you'd have to hide, that low shift would have to be filled by, by somebody on overtime.
One thing with that particular officer is he's a member of the military, and he's been leaving us in the summers.
We don't have choice there.
Well, I haven't, right now, no choice, I haven't had that additional help.
I can do that.
No, no, respectfully.
Thank you.
All right. Any other follow-ups for the chief?
Sure.
Thank you.
So with that being said, there, we have a, we have a budget meeting on the calendar, is listed as if needed for next Thursday. Do we, the board and the committee, do you folks want to keep that budget meeting for follow-up discussions? Or do we want to wait until the selectmen's meeting, which is the sixth, which is slated as the, you know, final vote night?
Does the sixth have to be the final vote night?
Let me take a look.
Because just discussing and everything else, I think we're going to have to fill a little bit of discussion on these. If you have some other budget ideas, you, I would agree, I think we're probably going to need that time. So.
Both the, the sixth and.
Yeah, I'll be back on the eighteenth. It's like you're back for us.
Regardless of six.
So when we, can you schedule, when are you going to get back?
I'll be back to eighteen.
On the eighteenth?
But that's pushing it out too. So if we, if we don't finalize on the sixth, can it go to the twentieth?
If we, if it was, would it be possible to consider, so on the twentieth, on the twentieth, I'm going to be presenting the draft town meeting warrant to the selectmen. And we're starting to get, really, you know, we're starting to get close, we're starting to get close to town meeting. If we wanted to push it out to the twentieth, what we could do is I could draft the town meeting warrants, but leave off a couple of these budget numbers, I mean, those could just be added after, you know. You guys will have the draft warrant, you can look at the language and so forth, you know. I don't know if it's possible to meet on the thirteenth, I didn't hear part of your discussion over there, sorry.
Scott's not here.
Scott's not here.
On the thirteenth?
Correct.
Or the sixth.
Or the sixth.
And again, I don't, I, I don't want to, I'm, I can remote in, so.
So I, I don't, I don't think we need to meet next week, but I will say that I'm not going to be here anyway next week.
I didn't, I, I was going to give you some time to, to have some time to think.
Okay.
The sixth, the sixth, if we aren't ready for the sixth, if somebody wants one on the thirteenth or. I understand you want to get everything under, out of, and out of the way by the twentieth.
I think.
And I appreciate that.
If you can hold the selectmen's meeting down, limit the, the agenda for the sixth, we can probably start the budget, but I don't know that we can get through all of it. It just depends.
Yeah, we're going to have all the budget down this year, and I mean, we only want to show up once.
I, they look pretty delicate.
My respect, we can throw up as many times as needs to, to approve a budget that presents to the town people.
Or we can just, or we wait till the twentieth to do a budget.
Yeah. I think I can give them some of it on the sixth.
I'd probably come on the thirteenth and finish it.
And that, that would be my suggestion, if, if you guys are all open to it, if on the sixth we come in, and we, you know, hash out the, you know, after you guys have absorbed, on the sixth we come in, hash out those items, maybe even on the sixth, if the Budget Committee and the Selectmen were willing, could vote on.
Some of them.
Some of them.
Right.
And then whatever's left over, we finish up on the thirteenth.
Yeah, sounds good to me, that works.
Yeah.
So we won't have a meeting next week?
Yeah. So I'll make sure I add that, so the, so April thirteenth. So we'll see each other on the sixth and the thirteenth. Should I plan on Police Chief being here on the sixth for that discussion?
Yes.
And what about the Fire Chief? I know there's been some questions on that.
Yeah, good idea.
Okay.
Please.
Please.
And by then, you have all those things that.
And you'll have them.
Haven't been in, you can put it.
Could we do the selectmen's meeting first, just because I think there's some things that we need to do before we review the police budget and the fire budget?
I'll, I'll, I'll do that, too.
I, I recommend that, uh, we do what we can easily on the sixth, and then maybe schedule, uh, the police and the fire and rescue, and perhaps the library for the thirteenth.
Probably that.
We've gotta get numbers, we're gonna get a budget from the library.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying, okay.
In other words, can't, don't think we can touch.
If you do it that way, we can do the budget.
Not ready for us. Oh, that doesn't matter to me, hey, I'm gonna come to you and say, I want thirty-five thousand dollars.
For the sixth, the sixth goes.
And I don't wanna question that.
The selectmen could. Slash, oh, now is a new officer, right? So, we need to go to the decision.
I think so.
No more.
Cleaning costs. Cleaning costs.
I'm very curious what school's gonna do with school resource officers.
Library by today that we're worked on, it's just like this.
I wanna do that, too. I wanna come and say, he's sending me thirty-five, I don't wanna complain, I just wanted to agree. All right, so sixth is thirteen, is there gonna be a select board that is meeting?
On the sixth.
Okay, and let pre-seed budget portion that one?
It just depends on how you wanna schedule it, I'm good either way, other than I think we need to do our meeting before we do, use budget, fire budget, library, minimum.
That's why I said we put.
So, if we do everything else.
Do them on the thirteenth.
Hold on, then to the thirteenth.
All right, so.
Do we just do that as a group, the select board, followed by budget discussion on the thirteenth for those three budgets?
Yep.
Can we do the easy stuff that I suspect?
First off.
There'll be, you're gonna do the agreement, you're gonna come on the sixth, right?
Yeah.
So, budget first, then on the sixth.
And that'll let them.
Buzz through while we can, whatever you.
So, I can get five, George?
Please.
Cause then that'll at least let town office folks and.
Geez, I lose a half hour.
Town man if you take it forward on the thirteenth, killing it.
One and a half hour early.
Five also?
No.
The third, the third, I, I'm envisioning it at five.
No, if I add another half an hour early, I, you win a half an hour late, make it an hour.
So, just so I'm tracking with everybody, I don't mean to beat it anymore, so on the sixth, we're all gonna be here, um, review, final review of the other budgets, other than police, fire, and library, and potentially vote on those, and then maybe some quick follow-ups if there is some, but then on the thirteenth, we're gonna meet again, do police, fire, and library with the additional information, and when I get any additional information.
Anything we're, we're not finishing.
Anything we don't finish, and then are we feeling like, pen, you know, barring unforeseen circumstances, we might be able to settle things on the thirteenth, hopefully.
Oh, yes.
And then, all right, good, and then, on the following meeting, on the twentieth, which is a selectmen's meeting, I can then have the warrant for the board to finalize.
Makes a lot more sense to keep that scheduled.
Okay. Well, given the discussion, is more space needed, so.
Would you, anything, too?
I got a little vacation, you get that one, Dave?
I got it. What's the time, what's the time?
It's, uh, seven fifty-three.
I had COVID, December, and I still got the car.
Oh, it, it'll take you.
Yeah, I can't get it.
This is, I took the test, so I don't have COVID, but it's like a hang-on, hang-on, it never happened, but when I got COVID, everything I get just hangs.
I think it changes your body.
It does, my immune system.
Since I had COVID, I, I'm not as reserved as I was, so.
Right. And I have all the.